There's a few more chairs up here. Come on up front, okay.
I won't buy it.
That's okay. I've had my shots. Okay, it looks like we're about four or five minutes late, so that's probably about on time for us here as well. I really appreciate it. I know y'all, all of you have concerns, some of you maybe think that the chicken houses are good. There's a discussion on this subject, you know, I think a lot of us really don't know much about chicken houses. Some of us have lived around them in other places and... But our community and the people around them are friends of ours. And we want to make real clear that we're not against people here. People that don't want chicken houses are against the companies and they're against the bad things that happen. And, you know, one or two is not going to really bother us, but I think the concern amongst a lot of people is that there'll be hundreds and hundreds of them or thousands of them. And this has happened in other communities and of course they all start with one or two. So, as many know, there's one near where I used to live and now there's a couple that are proposed within two miles of town. The map over here has a picture of where they are, ones on Armour and ones on Cadet Lake. Yeah, so we have a feed mill in Franklin, Kentucky and we have a slaughterhouse in Albany, Kentucky. And we're in what's called a proposed chicken corridor. And they have these in other places and their highways like Highway 52 and Highway 100, that they can come in with the feed and then end up at the slaughterhouses. It's just handy for them to have chicken houses. And may have been to Orange Spring and seen some of the football over there. So there's a reason for concern. So, you know, I'm just gonna open this up for some discussion. The agenda that I have planned would be to like to introduce a couple of speakers invited and then move on to open it up for public comment. And people can come up and say a few words or just stand up and say a few words about the conversation. Later on, we're going to go to the Armour Hotel and y'all are invited to a free dinner. And we'll have some more talking there. And we have a few ideas and some things we'd like to do. We're interested in where all of this manure is going to be spread and where it's going to end up. I think that that's one of the major concerns, the manure redemption. And so those are things we're going to talk about. Nutrient management plans and stuff like that. And I think there's a petition, someone wrote up a petition, another thing we might talk about. I don't know exactly where to go from here, but I think to start off with, I'd like to introduce Janelle from North Carolina. She's a ninth generation family farmer. Her parents had a land grant from the Revolutionary War, is that right?
Seventeen hundred six, before.
Yeah, I'm the king of England, I guess. She has transitioned into a more ecologically sound operation. But she lives in an area where there are how many, thousands of people, so.
Yeah, that's just the chickens. There's probably about a thousand chicken capos now within about four counties. Chickens and then the hog capos too. And of course now there's this one, Moratorium, and then hogs going in with lagoon technology. So there's no real growth in the hog industry, but the turkey industry's growing some, but the chicken industry's growing like crazy. Okay, so yeah, my name's Janelle Priggin, I'm from eastern North Carolina. I'm not generational, tenth generation family farm. Farm's been in my family since seventeen forty-six. You know, my family worked by corn, soybean growers, raised cattle. Used to raise chickens on the ground when I was little, raised hogs on the ground. And back in, back in the early eighties, there were virtually very few chicken houses around. And there were a few turkey houses, but very, very few. And then, then the swine with Wendell Murphy started coming in with the hog capos. And then next thing you know, Purdue came in and my dad signed up and he put in two houses and eventually he had a third house. He saw that as a, as a stable check because, you know, you can lose your, you know, you lose everything on corn and beans and cotton in a year, you know. So it was a stable check. But back then, we didn't know what was in the feed. We didn't know about the arsenic, we didn't know about the environmental situation. You know, I was in junior high, high school. So basically what happened was my dad signed a contract. And at that time, those houses were about eighty thousand apiece. The houses now run in about two hundred and fifty thousand depending on what company it's a piece. And most companies will be put in, at least around home there, won't before. I'm meeting a lot of people that owe debt of a million and two million dollars. And, and I just wanted to kind of give you some statistics of what, and then I'll, I'll talk to you more about later about how we were involved in contract poultry production and what ended up happening with our family and, and the bad situations that I've seen, not only with our family with contracts, but also a lot of other families. I actually went and testified in Alabama before the US Secretary of Agriculture and the US Attorney General and about contracts, you know, and how we got out of it and everything. And I met people that owed two million dollars. And, you know, I met people whose neighbor had committed suicide because, you know, because Pilgrim's Pride is shut down and left his family with all that debt and he committed suicide so that he could have the insurance for his family to get along. And, you know, it's just awful. And the one thing about the poultry companies, and I'll have to say this because I have seen it. With the Moratorium in North Carolina, they have been able to, they couldn't build any more hog houses. So those hog farmers were, had some stability in being able to keep a contract, okay? The poultry companies are notorious for shutting down complexes, letting people go after the houses are a certain number of years old. You know, the shelf life on these houses is probably twenty to twenty-five years, maybe even with the upgrades. And, I mean, just like with Purdue down in North Carolina, they shut down a whole complex because their slaughter facility was outdated and they were having sewage water treatment issues within Robertsonville. They shut down over two hundred houses. And those farmers all of a sudden had taxes they had to pay on facilities and loans and no chickens to go in them. And when they did that, they had gone the year before and got a whole brand new complex about two hours away down at the North Carolina-South Carolina border. And they did, and when I was in Alabama, I met some guys from southern Alabama that had just had the same thing happen to them if we at Purdue went over into Georgia and built another complex and then dumped those guys, and those guys had debt. And they're not the only ones. I mean, there's houses sitting up in the mountains in Forsyth County and all that area in North Carolina. Tyson houses, where Tyson's putting in new houses and letting houses go. But I wanted to kind of tell you what we've got. In North Carolina, there are nine times more chickens on factory farms than there are people in North Carolina. There are more factory farmed hogs, ten point one million, than nine, than people. There's nine million people in North Carolina. There are more than two point two million hogs on factory farms just in Duplin County. North Carolina, Duplin County, North Carolina produces twice as much untreated manure between the turkeys and the chickens and the hogs as the city, as New York City metro does. And then there's nearly eight hundred twelve thousand hogs on factory farms in Bladen County, North Carolina, produces as much untreated manure as the sewage from Chicago and Atlanta metro areas combined. I just, I just wanted to give you, kind of show you a map. This is just Duplin County. So this is eastern North Carolina, that's Duplin County. Okay, this is Lenore Green, this is Sampson. Duplin and Sampson are the worst counties in North Carolina. This right here, you see all those capos right there, all those hogs and chickens and turkeys? This is a great septic tank of the eastern seaboard, right here. Just in Duplin County, to give you an example, because it's the highest county and Sampson's right up there with it. And this was done, the latest numbers are in two thousand and seven. In two thousand and seven, there were two million two hundred seventy-four thousand five hundred twenty-four hogs on average at any time, given time, in Duplin County. Brolers or chickens, five million twenty-four thousand four hundred and forty-eight. And layers, four hundred ninety-one thousand five hundred twenty-seven. That's just in Duplin County. So what happens with these, with these companies when they come in and they build a hatchery and a feed mill? Most of them are looking at, if it's a smaller facility, they're looking at about two hundred capos, two hundred houses to, to supply that, that area, okay? And they're looking for it within about a fifty mile radius. County in our area, it's about four county region. And if this doesn't even reflect Sanderson Farms now, I'm gonna tell you a little bit about Sanderson Farms. This was before they came in. Since two thousand and seven, Sanderson Farms has built around two hundred and fifty capos in the area. Chicken, chicken capos. That's roughly an additional seven million five hundred thousand brolers at any given time in, in these counties right here. Since, since this was put, these figures were here. They're also now, okay, so they built this, this hatchery and this feed mill and a slaughter complex, excuse me, in Lenore County, Kenton. And from there, they've got about two hundred and fifty houses. Okay, so now they built that hatchery and that feed mill with rail spur so that they could handle another slaughter facility a little further away. I-95 runs right down here. So now they're trying to put in a slaughter facility there that will be furnished by the hatchery and the feed mill here. Another five hundred houses on top of that is what they're trying to do. And so, that's, so those houses will be, be built right back in this area. So, I mean, everywhere you turn, you're gonna see hog houses, turkey houses, chicken houses. So what I'm, the reason I'm telling you this, even though it's not relative to where you are, right now we're talking about a site with a couple of houses and another site with four. But what you need to do is look, the community can handle that, okay? I think, but the, but the bigger picture. What are the expansion plans of these companies? Are you going to be considered a CAFO friendly area? Can you handle the manure? We're talking flat land here. We're not talking about the hills that you've got here with the streams and creeks down at the bottom. And we, and, and we have major, major water problems. I mean, you heard about Hurricane Floyd and all the lagoons that ran off. But see, that's, that's a catastrophic event. What we deal with every day is the high phosphorus to nitrogen ratio in the poultry manure and the copper and the arsenic. But particularly the high phosphorus to nitrogen ratio. And so we've got eutrophications of our streams and our creeks and our rivers. And just like the Newton River, every summer, we have fish kills in this river. And, and we have bacteria that actually eat holes in the fish. And this has come from the over-eutrophication. Too many nutrients in these rivers and they cannot handle it. And that, and all along that new stream corridor and basin, there's just piles and piles of these capos. And it's not just the site of the facility, but it's all that manure that's being put out. And what's happened since Sanderson's come in, even with these two hundred and fifty houses, you know, the manure can, around home with the cropland, it's only applied when you're getting ready to grow a crop or, you know, when you first start with a crop. When you got corn two foot high, you're not putting manure out. Where there's cake out between every flock, when they go in and cake out and clean out underneath the water lines and that, that's a smaller amount. You're gonna clean out, depending on the company, gonna clean out to the ground about every year or two years. That's when you got a lot of major stuff to get rid of. But what happens is they've got so much manure now from these capos that they don't have enough area to put it. And you're supposed to store it either in a manure shed, it has to be covered and on the ground uncovered for more than fifteen days. I had a guy call me, he's one of the guys that goes around and gets some of them and spreads it and stuff. And, and farmers buy it from him. And he called me because he knew we had farmland. And he called me to see if we could take some manure. And so I talked to him and everything, and I found out the situation. He said, I said, "Well, we don't need him, you know, we don't use it and everything." I said, "What are you doing right now because of corn and hog, what are you doing?" He said, "Farmers are going in the woods and they're making a place and they're storing it anywhere they can, at the back end where nobody can see it, back in the woods so that people won't see it and hopefully won't say there is not enough land." He said, "I'm square with begging anybody to take this manure." So the reason I'm telling you, we're not talking about two houses in your community, we're not talking about four houses in your community. We're talking about what is your community gonna look like? Five years from now, ten years from now, twenty years from now? Because I know what my community looked like back in the eighties and I know what it looks like now. I wanted to show you some of those things. This is eastern North Carolina, I don't know if y'all can see this or not. This is the poultry being spread. You can see here, it's coming across the road on somebody else's land, this car had to ride through it. And, you know, you've got, you've got ammonia, you've got nitrates, you've got bacteria, all of that stuff, volatile, you know, volatile chemicals and volatile stuff that bothers people that have breathing problems. Here, this is being spread. And what I couldn't show you, because I couldn't bring up the video, I didn't have a way to show it here, is this was being spread out here on this field and there was a person whose house was right over next to it. No way that they could have a cookout or enjoy, you know, being with their family. And that stuff, the way the wind was blowing that day, was gonna land all up on their porch. And what you're gonna see here is, in North Carolina, we have the largest concentration of swine and poultry capos in the world, in the world. You see here, that's chickens, that's hogs, that's hogs, that's chickens, that's hogs, that's hogs. I mean, they're just right on top of each other and even more, now Sanderson wants five hundred more. Okay, this is, this is chickens, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. There's, there's a hog right there with about eight. And there's, I don't know, that's maybe full with hogs. Right there, where you can see this from airplane, and look here, this is where the manure is being. And, and sometimes you see it piled up behind there. And they're not supposed to have it uncovered, sitting on the ground for more than fifteen days. And when that rain gets on it and it's out there like that. See, we're not even talking about composting manure. We're not talking about a cake out and then they store it and they compost it and break it down. We're talking about fresh, hot manure when they do that full plant out there. Since the high heaven, I know because I lived it. My family, I lived it with my family for sixteen years till we got out. And I'll talk to you more about that later. But that's what, that's what I want you to be honest with me on. What you want your community to look like. The other thing is, a lot of this area up in here is pasture land. And we're talking about the slope of this pasture land. And you have the, come off of it and you're gonna have a lot of the nutrients are gonna wash away when it rains and goes down the hills to your streams and stuff. It's gonna lay there on the top of that ground, it's not being incorporated into that soil. So, I mean, actually, what the, what the value of that manure is when it comes out of the chicken houses and what you actually end up with in the ground is two different stories. It really is not that high quality. Once the sun's got to it and the ammonia's burned off from it and you get the runoff from the rain, you know, you're really not getting that great of a fertilizer out of it. One of the blessings you do have in Tennessee is you do have a permit and process for poultry capos. We don't even have that in North Carolina. The only thing they have to have is a nutrient management plan, no records at all kept for manure that leaves the farm. I don't think you have very good records for that. A lot of this manure now is leaving the farm where it's being raised at. And so even though, you know, you as a, as a CAFO grower, as a, as a poultry grower, might have a nutrient management plan for the soil you want to put that manure on, if you, if I, if it sells off to you, nobody's, you don't have a nutrient management plan. So there's no chain of custody or chain of responsibility for where it's being applied, how much is being applied, it's being applied at agronomic rates and that you're not gonna get, you know, a, a eutrophication in your streams. And your waters are just so beautiful up here and clean. And what worries me is you have the karst soils and you have the underground caves and, and the waterfalls and all that, and it just, you know, I really, I know what we have and I know you don't want to lose what you got up here because we will never get back. I mean, I grew up fishing down home and I don't even eat fish either in this river or the Pamlico Sound anymore because it is not healthy to it. So, anyway, I wanted to tell you, so manure from, from poultry capos can release excess nitrogen and phosphorus. And we talked about it feeding, the algae blooms in the waterways, its mother's aquatic life and contaminating the water supplies. According to the EPA, hog, chicken and cattle waste has polluted over thirty-five thousand meters in twenty-two states. And these type of facilities have significantly contaminated groundwater in seventeen states. Heavy metals and endocrine disruptors are waste products of these facilities. And I can, I've been outside of the picture and seen it also in my community. These are not farms, they are industrial with toxic waste products. Companies are externalizing the expenses of dealing with the waste, expenses for the dead chickens and all the money for building these facilities, they're being externalized on the farmer who signs the contract and on the community. These are not family farms. It might be a family that owns it, but the company has shareholders and huge profits and they're externalizing their cost and their responsibilities onto that family farmer who signed that contract and can get it pulled at any time and has signed his name over and owes his soul to the company store. I know because my family did it, we were left with over a hundred thousand dollars worth of debt. And I will tell you, my mama taught school for thirty years. She is now seventy years old, my daddy's seventy-one. And you know how we're pulling ourselves out of that? We are pulling ourselves out of that. And we just gotta pay off by selling one piece of meat at a time, or grass-fed beef, or grass-fed lamb, or pasture-raised chicken, or pasture pork. We had, my mama stands on her feet, matter of fact, she's been up since about four o'clock this morning. She's been at Farmer's Market in Raleigh selling to pay those bills because that company dumped her, dumped them, and dumped all those other producers. So I'm telling you, when, in the early nineties, when I went through a period of time, before we knew all of this environmental stuff, I went through a period of time, I had been to school for molecular biology. I'd worked at ECU School of Medicine doing research on hook and calf. I wanted to come back and I wanted to run the family farm and I wanted to carry it to the next generation because my daddy didn't have any boys. And I went and talked to a buddy about putting in some chicken houses myself. And the buddy looked at me and he said, "Janelle", and that time, those houses were only about a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars apiece. He looked at me, he said, "Janelle, you got good credit, your family's got a good name." "I'm gonna take some of them." He said, "You're gonna work twenty-four a day, you're on call twenty-four hours, not work, you're on call response all the time." He said, "You're going to tie up your family's line." He said, "And watch you." And at that time, it was ten years to pay it off. It's now fifteen years. He said, "You're going to work for less than minimum wage." And he showed me by the time everything was figured out, he said, "You're working for about eight dollars an hour." He said, "That's what you're working for." Anyway, he said, "By the time you get through with all the expense stuff, you're gonna end up with about twelve thousand dollars for four houses for the hope you can go to college to make that kind of money." He said, and I said, "But, but these will be paid off in ten years." He said, "That's right." He said, "But you know as well as I do," he said, "you sign that contract and they're gonna come in." The reality is, before that chicken houses are paid off, they come in, they, they want a new feed line, they want a new water line, they want new blackout curtains and chick mates and those kind of things. So you're gonna keep the debt all the time. If you think you want to put in these chicken houses and they're... If you think you wanna put in these chicken houses and they're gonna be your retirement, you better think long and hard. Because my, that's what my daddy thought. He thought that was gonna be his retirement. His retirement is us getting out, busting our behind seven days a week. And I can tell you what all we did, but it's to pay, it, it, to pay bills now. We do it with multiple species and we go back to do it professionally. But you know, I can't do that cause I don't know that much money. And I told my daddy after I went to Alabama and I met people, I met, I met a man who owed $2 million. I met another man owed a million dollars. And they were telling me, I got into this, I didn't know what I was getting into. What, how could I do what you're doing? I looked at him and I told him, I said, you, I said, I don't know what to tell you. I said, but I'm gonna win a hundred thousand dollars of debt, basically. I said, it's silly, I said, I said, I can't even start creating a market from scratch and pay off $2 million. I said, I said, I'm gonna tell you. I said, it's control walk. I said, I'm gonna tell you, market that out of $2 million. And I come home and I told my daddy, I said, you, you better be thankful that that's all we are. I said, cause we didn't see a lot of that. I can sleep at night, you can sleep at night. I said, these people can't sleep at night. Not when, not when they know they run a risk and they've seen it. And they've had neighbors that are cut loose and that still have that. And they, and, and, and it was supposed to be their retirement, it don't. So, and I'll talk to you, I'd be glad to talk to you about how we, how we managed to, to work around all that. But I wanted you to understand what it was like 25 years ago in eastern North Carolina and what it's like now and how beautiful your area is. And I will tell you, we're not a metropolis. We live down in the country. My mama drives, my mama drives 80 miles to Farmer's Market. She works at Farmer's Market and even for us and Taylor. Both on, online on internet. We supply different, you know, um, butcher shops and we supply grocery stores and, and, and we do sell Farmer's Market. It's kind of a, um, multi season. But you don't have to live in Nashville, you don't have to live in Raleigh, North Carolina to do it without these contracts. But what I'll say is, this is a beautiful place up here and a short day to see you ruin your beautiful water and ruin your beautiful community by a whole bunch of them coming in. The community can probably handle what is coming in right now. But you need to look at the bigger picture and, and, and the loopholes that you have in Tennessee as far as the manure moving off from the facility and not really being under that nutrient management plan. So, um, I think that's pretty much what I need to talk about.
Yeah, tell us what, uh, uh, one of these chickens, did you eat the chicken when you had them? And do they, can you just take the chicken out of there and put it in your backyard block?
Jeff wanted, Jeff wanted to, wanted me to talk a little bit about that. No, we never ate any chickens. First of all, you weren't allowed to. Two, it was nasty. Okay, I will tell you, they, these chickens are very line bred, um, for big breast production, um, for, for fast growth. They don't forage, they don't have very good legs. Um, all they're really do is just move from the feeder to the water and they move a very minimal amount. They, you could not put them outside and then forage. The things that were really gross to me was the heart attacks, the bad legs, um, the lung problem. And when one would die, cause you're pushing them so hard to grow and they would kill over with a heart attack. And you would see dermatitis in the skin and, you know, CTs, um, all those kinds of things. And, and I saw them come in and the chemicals that we had to use, um, you know, the, the vaccines and stuff and, and the medicines that were given through the dosimatic water systems, those kinds of things. And, and when they would die, particularly when it was summer, oh, it was awful. But when they were big like that, because what would happen is they had that feed and they, they lay down on that litter and see that manure, that litter puts off the heat because you know, it's decomposing. And they're full feed and they sit down on their breasts. And in, in the summer, that breast can take a heat. And so when they die, they just start decomposing and get like disgusting really quick. But that's why they've gone to tunnel systems is to try to cut down on that because I've seen the mass mortalities. And the things that, I can tell you things that you may not end up seeing up here. But when Hurricane Floyd came through in our situation, we did not, we were not flooded by a creek or anything like that. But on our farm, we had 23 inches of rain in nine hours. And it was no further than that, but just through the natural path that it made down through the farm, which happened to be through one of them chicken houses. And we lost altogether, we lost one chicken house and part of another. It was about 30,000 birds. And I want to tell you, Frank Purdue, who's now dead, came down and he gave my daddy a thousand dollar check. He had his picture taken and, you know, he went to, you know, it was a whole PR thing, okay? And, you know, he, uh, taking care of those farmers, it was his chicken, not my daddy's chicken. It was his manure, but you know, I mean, we get stuck with dead chickens. We got stuck with the manure. We were in there, he gave my daddy a thousand dollars to get those chickens out. We were in there, no joke, with layers on. And this stuff, that manure and the shavings in there, it smelled all up. And you couldn't even see all those dead chickens. And we were waiting through there and we were picking them up and trying to seal them with our legs. And that's when they finally crusted over enough and dried up enough that we could get in there with, you know, front loader machine and try to start. We had to dig a huge trench on the farm and stick those chickens in there and bury them in the ground, which was not, that's not environmentally safe to do, but it was a mass casualty. So what I want you to start thinking about is when the cows are out on the pasture, when the chickens are out on the pasture, now, you know, we have, we have laying hens and we rotate them behind our hogs and we rotate them behind our sheep and our cows and our broilers the same way. We are putting the manure, we're out there depositing the difference on the pasture. We'll rotate, we have about 350 acres and we rotate them through different farms. It's not all of this concentrated manure with an imbalance of phosphorus to nitrogen ratio that's being applied in, and without, not even talking about all the chemicals and the different drugs and everything else, but it's being applied, um, in, in a very small area. So what we're doing now is, is more in balance with nature and is more in balance with protecting our community now. And, and later I'll be glad to talk to you about how we've done it. And, and, and I'm not gonna lie to you, it's not one of those things where you just go out like, you know, like, you plant, you know, you plant a crop and then you go sit at the store, you know? And, and sit and talk to the guys and drink Coca-Cola. No, it's not like that. You know, we're the breeder, we take them to the slaughter plant, we pick it up, we market it, we, everything. We do all of that. And so it requires a lot more, um, responsibility on our part, but we've been successful. But those chickens, like I told you, are not meant to go out on pasture. I wouldn't have ate one for nothing. Um, I couldn't stand it when they died because of how fast they started rotting and just, you know, the, the body disintegrated. But, so what we raise is we raise, um, freedom rangers. And they have been developed, actually another woman and her husband who were from Great Britain, who helped with the development of that breed and, um, have now sold it to another company in the United States. And that's what a lot of the pastured roe or pastured poultry farms are using because, these are red birds. They're double breasted birds, so you get a, a double breast. You know, people in America like with breasts. But it's an elongated breast, has a little different contribution to it. They got good legs, good foraging capability, um, they can deal with the heat. I tried, when we first started out raising chickens on pasture, I tried getting some of these chickens that they're raising in chicken houses and putting them out on pasture. Oh my God, when they got, that last week, I put all this money into them and all this feed and everything. And it would get hot in the summer, in the afternoon from about three o'clock, five o'clock. Uh, you know, we had it, it was a hundred, ten, fifteen degrees of figure the humidity in. And they'd just lay right down and sit on their breasts and then just die. And I lost like three quarters of my flock right there at one time like that. And they're just not hearty birds. And, 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 and because their lack of foraging, they just don't have a lot of nutrition in them that a pasture raised bird does. But anyway, I kinda want to tell you what it's like in North Carolina and our experience.
Go ahead, yes. I didn't get here right at the beginning, but you just mentioned the tunnel system that they've gone to. What is that?
Um, it is, what they do is they pull in air, it's kinda like a, kinda like a radiator or swamp cooler system, you understand what I'm talking about? So you'll have like, um, cardboard or hog hair or whatever, some kinda woven, um, um, like, it looks like a radiator kinda on side of the chicken house. And they'll have water kinda running down it or, um, through piping or sprayed on it. Could be spray on pads, it's a type of pad. And so those big tunnel fans at the back end are gonna suck that air and they're gonna have, depends on how fast you run them, I don't know, 20, it, it could drop the temperature in there 20 degrees. Um, but they'll have a good stream of air coming through and that cooling of that water running across them. And that's what keeps them like that. But they've gone, the companies have gone to either close the buildings or they've gone to blackout curtains because these chickens are very, can be very flighty. And they'll, they'll, um, group up in a corner and they will, um, smother. And, and what they've done is they want them to eat. And then they want the lights to go off and they want it black and they want them, you know, they want them to settle down and basically sit there with no exercise. So what you got is a bunch of obese chickens, okay? And that's, and, and, and that's not, it's not a very healthy source of protein for you to eat. But anyway, that, I, what I mainly want to talk about was the difference in those chickens. I want to talk about what eastern North Carolina's like. I don't want to see that happen in your area up here. And I just wanted to tell the people here who do, who are signing these contracts and who are thinking about signing these contracts. I'm 46 years old. That banker told me, you know, I was telling you about it. He said, I want you, he said, I want you to go home and take two weeks to think about this. He said, and if at the end of two weeks, you want to keep on pursuing this, he said, I, he said, then, you know, we'll talk about it. And I went home and I, he told me, he said, Janelle, he said, I know you wanna save the family farm and you wanna, he said, but I don't think this is the way you need to do it. He said, because you can go out, he said, and you can make more money just working a job out in the community than you can with this and you don't have all that debt looking at you and you think about having a family and supporting a family. He said, because you're making a long-term, huge dollar commitment. He said, and you know they can, they can pull these contracts at any time. That was a 10-year contract. Now, a lot of these companies have gone to flock-to-flock contracts. I can't even believe that a bank will, alone their money on a flock-to-flock contract. I wouldn't loan somebody a million dollars on a flock-to-flock contract. And what's happened, I want to tell this for, I, I finish, what's happened down home after Purdue did what they did, when Sanderson come in, the banks didn't want to loan money for those Sanderson houses because there were so many Purdue houses still sitting there empty. They wanted them to take on those Purdue houses. Well, Sanderson didn't want to, that's the other thing about these companies. Their, their, their feed lines, their water lines, their heaters, their house design is very specific to that company. So if they pull out, another company does not want to take you because you don't fit their little scheme with all your little equipment and everything. And they don't want to retrofit or take you in with a house that's five foot more narrow or is a foot taller, that kinda thing. Because they say you'll be inefficient. So the bank said, you know, we don't think we want to loan this money around here. So Sanderson, in order to get in those 250 houses they got down east, they had to bring in their banking company out of Texas to finance those houses. And that's, and now they're looking at another 500 houses. But the best advice that that banker ever gave me was to ask me if I home and think about it for two weeks. And I did. And I was kinda mad when I left that day. But looking back now, from 1994, 95, no, 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 it won't. It was 1997, from 1997 to now, that's the best piece of advice that anybody's ever gave me. I don't, we owe very little money to the bank. We do what we do, um, our sales, we, we finance our growth through our sales. And, you know, I'll be talking about that more later, but we've gone to where, you know, our gross receipts for this past year, um, were 600, right at $600,000, 2,550, $600,000.
Just give Janelle a hand. There'll be a plenty of time for answering questions. The on the program speaker is Terry. Terry Spence is from Missouri. He also has been involved in this kinda stuff. Litigation for how many years?
19.
19 years, uh, and, um, he knows, uh, a little bit to share, share with us. So there are a few more chairs up front if, uh, if you all want to, uh, that are here. Okay, uh, Terry from, from Missouri here.
Hi. Very happy to be here. This is my first trip to Red Bulling Springs and getting to know Jeff and getting to know your community here. And it's, uh, it's something out of the past to see the pristine water and stuff that you don't see across the rest of the United States. Terry Spence and my wife and I own a farm in northern Missouri where I've spent nearly, uh, 66 years of my life on the farm where I was born and raised. Uh, we raise cattle. Uh, we've raised all type of sustainable livestock from chickens to hogs to dairy. All this at a small scale like most sustainable farmers did in years past. And, uh, it's been quite a trial the last probably, it began for me in 1995. I was a, a farmer, like most of you in this room, that's been in my business. It's like Jeff, that you do your own thing, you don't get involved in community issues and never used a telephone, never used fax, no computers, nothing else because the land was my life. But it changed for me in 1995 when a large swine operation moved in with 80,000 dead of, of hogs and 72 barns near my farm. And from there forward, my life really had changed. It, uh, it's something I didn't want to do, but it was forced upon me and our community to, to stand fast and, and try to do something about that. So, you know, we waited in, all the way from the local level to the state level, to the State Court of Appeals, to a federal Clean Water Act lawsuit. And now here I am, since 1995, still involved and engaged with consent decree with this company. So it's, it's a terribly long haul. And what I did realize through all those years, you know, I was always raised to, uh, believe that there is a true democracy, uh, you know, that things are regulated and, you know, we do it the just way. But after being through the system and around the block about 15 or 20 times, I finally come to realize there was no democratic process in this nation whatsoever. And what I concluded from there is, you know, the power is in the power of the people. One by one, one by one. And the group that followed me through this journey of 19 years was people I'd known all my lives, people I'd grown up with, and they stuck with me and they, they held on to my belief that, you know, nobody's going to do anything for us unless we organize and we do that together. And today, that, that group that initiated with me over 20 years ago, they still stand fast and we still hold, hold true together, uh, you know, in our, in our beliefs of what we do. So, you know, what, what's, I kinda believe, uh, along with Jeff here tonight, I mean, my presence here and, and I'm with a, I'm also a, uh, independent consultant for the Social Responsible Agriculture Project. Uh, through this, in about 1999, I became a group and associated with this group that asked me if I would be a consultant and work with other communities with my experience on, you know, what I'd been through and this issue. So I've, I've spent since 1999 working nationally, uh, with the Social Responsible Agricultural Project. Uh, we have consultants, I think there's 10 of us, uh, or so across the whole United States. We all work in so many states, in Tennessee, Kentucky is one of my states, Arkansas and various other states. But what we do is, you know, we come in when asked, you know, to work with the community and try to help them organize and provide our expertise and what we've seen and what's worked, what hasn't worked. But at no time ever are we, you know, in the middle of what you're doing in your community because we want you to see the ones making the decision. This is your home, this is your life. If you want help, you know, ask us for it and we will provide whatever we can to do. So, you know, I, I got entailed in that and it, it's been a long journey, but I, I have to say, through all the years, the people like the citizens here in Red Bulling people like the citizens here in Red Boiling Springs, with Jeff and all the states that I've worked in through those years, that has been home to me because I'm talking to people that are true individuals and farmers that have a self-belief in sustainable farming and our future only relies on what we do with the careful. Industrialization, you know, began several decades ago with CAFOs or concentrated animal feeding operations coming across nationally and globally, you know, trying to take over our complete food system. But we all know the sustainable farming practice is the only heritage that's going to carry on and make this an environment that, you know, that our future generations can live with. So that's kind of where we go. And, you know, I started out to say, you know, I want to stress also, as Jeff did, that we're not here to, we're all farmers. I mean, ones that sign contracts, it's not, we're not in opposition to that. You know, we're all farmers trying to make a living. And I understand, and I've worked with a lot of farmers that have contracts, been contractors and thinking about contractors in various states. We all want, have to do what we have to do to make a living. So, you know, we may disagree on what's being said here tonight or we may not, but, you know, what we take home is something to think about and, you know, as a community and as friends, whether I'm from Missouri or North Carolina, you know, we can stand united and have the same belief that, you know, our environment and our, our community, our, our social fabric and everything is taking a beating all across the United States from these types of operations, from Tyson, or Smurkert Brown, Seaboard, whoever, or Purdue, I mean, we're getting fewer and fewer as farmers. There's, every day, there's farmers leaving the farm because they can't survive when we don't have a market. We have the product, but we don't have the market because it's being taken over by corporate corporations. So it's, you know, I, I've, it's really saddening to me because, you know, besides working with rural communities that's trying to work out a strategy on what they foresee in the future, I also work with farmers, as I mentioned, in Arkansas. I've been involved in Delaware with both producers there, with Purdue. And what is really sad to me, I've been working real seriously with a whole pot of contractors with Tyson in Arkansas. And some of them has been in a contract since mid 80s or the early 80s. And like two years of being paid totally out of debt after all those years and doing all the upgrades and everything that Tyson required. But now they was committed to have to spend another $500,000 to upgrade their facilities to retain a contract. And some of those producers are dropping out. We've worked with one couple down there for, I have for two years now that's been fighting farm credit foreclosure. They have acreage, they have land, they have cattle, but they have six poultry houses farm credit wants paid for immediately. We've got it retained to five years now. They've got five years to try to come up with a solution. And we've been working with them. They're, they're trying the sustainable practices by opening up a couple of chicken house, giving animal welfare approved for their eggs and poultry to run pasture, poultry. It's, it's hard because, you know, to go from one conversion to the other in a space in Arkansas where that's a home, a home of Tyson, it's very difficult, but at least they're trying. And there's producers in the, in the Del Mar Peninsula that has converted and is finding a market. So, you know, that's the things we need to work for. And I, I really sympathize with these farmers. It about makes me cry when I go visit them and they explain all this to me that now we're losing everything. They're wanting our land, they're wanting our, our cattle. They want everything just because of six poultry houses sitting there and because Tyson won't ever let you out of debt. There's more and more producers across this country starting to open up and share the experiences that they're, that they're going through. And just, just to reference, I mean, back in 2011 in Arkansas, Tyson summoned 232 contractors to a meeting. And when they went to the meeting, this is, this is the press thing, it's in the press, when they went to the meeting, they was to reduce their, their bird size to seven pounds instead of eight pounds, number one, which was going to cost them running four or five flocks through a year to lose a pound per bird. That was going to really cost them. The next venture was that they was going to have to comply with in a contract was to, instead of restocking in, in six to eight days, they was going to be held to 20 to 25 days before they could put a new flock in, which was going to cut them out of a fifth flock overall. So they was required to do this and some upgrades, 232 of them. And they was signed before they left the meeting that day, whether you're going to do it or whether you're not. So I, it's a scary situation to be, to be put into that type of a situation. So, you know, our project works all sides of the fence. We're all farmers on my team. We understand the realistic of what's going on across the country. You know, besides, you know, trying to build communities that resist this, we've worked on a lot of state legislation, federal regulation, and there is nothing out there. Believe me, there is nothing out there. Industry has whittled every aspect of any regulatory process that's going to affect these large countries. And the only power that's left is, is you as individuals that's ever going to make change. And all the work I've done with local communities and staff, the best tool that is left today is the tool of having citizens become involved. This is, this is your country. This is our farms. You have to do something. I mean, in other words, if you want to stand by and just let things sizzle away, it's, it's for sure going to happen. So, you know, it's one thing I want to stress, it's like Janelle, that, you know, if there's going to be change, if you don't mind seeing the farms disappear, the small farmers, do nothing. If you want your community to, to devalue and properly value social fabric, hope that's not my phone. If you want to see that demise, just do nothing and that will happen. If you want our environment, our clean air, our clean water to disappear, do nothing. Just go home and turn the TV back on. So, you know, we all have a responsibility and that's what I really try to stress to everybody in all the states that I work in, that, you know, until we resolve that we, the people, are going to preserve and protect what we have on this planet, that's the only thing that's going to be our salvation. I could probably talk for a long time, but I know Jeff, we're running, we're really running short on probably the time. But, you know, independence, we as farmers are losing our independence, you know, in the marketplace, all across the globe, we're, we're losing it. Consumers are losing their, they've lost their independence because the sustainable food like Jeff produces and Janelle produces doesn't reach all across this country. The mark, you know, we, we don't have the access. We can if, if it was provided, but consumers losing independence on, you know, how their food is raised and how it's produced. They don't, a lot of people don't have a selection. Communities are losing their independence because, you know, these things are coming in on. Every individual in this room is losing your independence because you don't have the freedom to have fresh air, clean water and a clean environment anymore. So, you know, there's been a lot of battles fought for independence, which stood strong and cost this country for independence. And we're going to have to do it again or this way or the way and do nothing as usual, like, you know, like it's been in the past. And it's getting worse and worse. There's an issue here that I don't know, but I talked with Jeff about a little bit yesterday because I, I do a lot of work in, in swine operations all across the board in a lot of states because I have 80,000 as my neighbors at home. But we're seeing a huge, huge, since this epidemic and virus got into the hogs, we're seeing a huge shift by major corporations moving out, going to another state. We're getting from out of Iowa, the second largest producer of hogs in the United States, is now moving their sow, sow operations in Missouri. I'm dealing with a slew of those. We're seeing poultry moving all the way up into South Dakota, 30 million or so. We're seeing poultry moving all across the board, Pennsylvania, everywhere. So, you know, it makes me wonder a lot of times, you know, that we have the ABN flu virus that's going to the chickens and stuff. We have the FDB virus that's been resolved in the swine yet after the seven or eight million lost last year of baby pigs. So are we, are they all looking for new territory, new equipment funding, move Farm Service Agency? I mean, why not leave that disease-ridden issue we have here in these buildings and soils we've contaminated? Let's go find fresh ground. That's just a theory, but the money's available. Walk away, start out fresh, move your goals and work, work on the front. So that's just something to, to think about. But I really like, you know, your mission statement. That really, I read that the other night on, on your website. You know, your vision 2020 says, Red Boiling Springs, Tennessee shall have as its purpose to stimulate interest and awareness of our history, to encourage the true use of our community, to promote the preservation of historic resources, to combat community deterioration and create an environment that will improve the quality of life. In that purpose, it is very clear and awaits this community's commitment and fulfilling that mission. And I just want to say as a, as a consultant for the Social Responsible Agriculture Project, we are here. Whatever you, if this, if all this carries through and we're down through here, the humongous growth of Tyson's contract operations, we're here to assist you, if that's your will. But this community, this is your livelihood and, you know, I hope you make the right decisions and stand fast, you know, this is ours and you're not going to take it away from us. And it takes a lot of personal involvement, but legislative wise is, is pretty much been taken care of. Ain't going to happen until the politicians realize that, you know, we vote for them. Our Congress, our state legislators, and even down to the county has, has taken advice of the Big Apple. And they like it. But we don't like it as individuals and farmers. So I want to thank you very much. And we'll be around later this evening over at Janelle. But I'm just like Janelle, you guys have such a pristine place here that I, you don't see very often. And I flew into Nashville from Kansas City, Missouri, and, and the drive up through here was tremendous. I mean, we have a lot of rolling hills in Missouri too, and I run beef cattle. And I've been called everything out of the sound because, you know, I believe in, in our, our stewardship and preserving, you know, the land and the agriculture that built this country. It's a heritage that we're losing rapidly. And there's nobody going to follow. And what are we going to leave for our ancestors? I have children, I have grandchildren. I'll be 68 in April and I've got a, my children has followed in my footsteps even though I've caused them a lot of grief over the years. My grandson, when I was 58, he did a whole 45-minute presentation on his grandpa. And it was all about, I've, I've had people from Greece, I've had people from Poland and all my speaking engagements across the country and everything. He put that into a PowerPoint. And up to that point, I thought, you know, I've spent 18 years of my life away from my children and grandchildren. You know, and it really plagued me for years until I seen that and how proud that made me that, you know, I instilled something in them. And just recently, my granddaughter has joined with me in my work. So, you know, what we pass on is going to be what carries us into the future. So, thank you very much. And I will be around tonight and I've really enjoyed being here. You're a great group of people and, and I hope, you know, we can walk away from this, you know, agree or disagree, but at least let's all take something home to think about, you know, what's the future of Red Boiling Springs. Thank you.
Well, a lot to think about. I'm hoping that a lot of you are coming over to the hotel. It's really great to see this many people get out. I know we all have busy lives and probably a lot of those people wouldn't be here. Luckily, they're not. We don't have any more chairs. One thing that I just wanted to, to share with you is that dealing with this issue over the last five years has been one of the most frustrating, distressing things that I've ever gone through. What was the, all these things that they're talking about and moving out. But on the other hand, it's been really probably the most rewarding thing that I've ever gone through in that I have come to know a lot of neighbors that I, that I never knew before. And to see people getting out and, and at a community meeting, this is really special. This doesn't happen very much. And it's, it's just been so heartwarming to me to, to, to make such good lifelong friends in my community with people who basically didn't like me. And I really didn't like them. They were like state troopers and politicians and all kinds of stuff, chemical farmers. And I would like the dirty hippie, you know? But now we love each other. It's really cool. And I'm going to bring up some other friends that, that I, I didn't know. Judy and she really didn't know me. And now we're friends. And this is, it's really great. And she's got a couple of ideas of, of things that we can do, practical things that we can do. One is a petition. Do you have a copy of your petition?
I did not bring it in. I, I thought I was going to present it up there, but I can talk.
Okay, just come up and talk. Judy Morris, she's one of our amazing.
And I have a voice trouble. So, but I'm a school teacher. I can talk. What we would like to, to present and propose is that we as a, as a community, as a group, ask our representatives, our senator, our legislator, and, and any others that we know, all of them for that matter. We have, we do not have nutrient management plans that follow the litter when it leaves the CAFO, when it drives out of the, out of Cadet Farm or whichever farm it might be. No more records, no more rules. We would propose that we ask our legislators, legislators to write the, the rules that the receivers of the litter would also have a nutrient management plan so that there would be some management, there would be some record kept, there would be some responsibility that would go with it when it goes out the driveway. And CAFO, yes, there are, there are rules there, but once it goes out the driveway, it's reranged. So if they want to pile it up or if they want to set it deep or whatever, that seems to not be a problem unless it goes so far as to go into one of our streams when it would get into the Clean Water Act. But if we could get enough strength, enough signatures, enough people involved, enough letters going out, that we could get the attention of some of our legislators, perhaps we could get that rule changed. And wouldn't that be nice? Wouldn't that be nice? It might go statewide. It might protect us, but it might protect somebody else as well. So can we try that? Are you willing? Will you sign it? Will you send it? You're dang right. That's, that's, and, and I've written, I like to write letters. So we've written a researched letter or paper. I, I've spent a good deal of time reading. And if we have a lot of signatures on that, but we need some more to get the attention again, we'll send it to the politicians and, and anybody that cares anything about our environment and see if we can bring some attention to the situation here and abully what Janelle's talking about in North Carolina, if we can do that.
I wanted to just say one thing, you know, we're sitting here and it dawned on me all of a sudden. I really kind of needed to say this to you. Do you think we can, which what I was talking about earlier is being, people in the sense of being the bottom of the set tank with the, you know, with the amount of, sheer number of animals and of animals and manure overload in those counties. Dublin County, Seven Springs was the county seat for Dublin County, and eighty, a hundred years ago, it, it was like this here. It had the hotel and the springs and everything else. And now Dublin County is not known as a place for helping waters and a place for healing. It's known for the sheer amount of pollution and manure. It's known all over the United States, you can call, you can talk to people in New York City, if they know anything about North Carolina and, and the situation with the CAFOs and the manure, they know about Dublin County. So I don't want Red Bull Springs to turn into Seven Springs.
Amen. So we have, we have researched information, letters written, we have a petition written, lots of signatures already gathered.
We're gonna pass it around.
And, and we're going to, um, and then we have this proposal for change in legislation. Um, I guess that's it.
Thank you.
Hey, I have a question on your part. In your research, did you find the possibility that, uh, our county commissioners could set up zoning that would be of value to this operation?
They have. Um, fifteen hundred feet was their rule, but it was a rule by the state, but it says three hundred feet.
Yeah, but I, I wanted to probably tell that. Okay, you got it, that's what I've been working on all week.
So, uh, what they're referring to is a motion on September twenty-first that passed immensely about, uh, locating these CAFOs and regulating them. This was overridden, this happened in nineteen ninety-eight, it was overridden by a, uh, right to Farm Act that passed in two thousand and two. This is part of the legislative activity that, uh, the S R E P works with. There, uh, there are things we can do through legislature, and there's things we can do through litigation, but we don't, it's gonna be really hard because those companies have a lot of money. Our best, uh, way to, to look at this is through the community. All the people that are gonna put CAFOs in are our neighbors, they're our friends, they're our family, they're good people. We don't want them to sign fifteen-year contracts and, and, and go bankrupt and commit suicide. And then we don't want our community to be divided between ninety percent of the people not wanting to make a lot of money. We don't want any of that. And there are ways to take a farm now and make money, and we're gonna talk some about that later. And, uh, there's, there's a lot of harm out there right now. And when there's a kind of threat to a community and, and people get together, uh, and start talking about it, this can be a real godsend, because, um, it does, it brings people together and we start putting our heads together and thinking about how we can go about this. Now, uh, these CAFOs, they teach them out of water, come into them. Uh, we've got the figures, and it's thousands and thousands of gallons, twenty thousand gallons a day per house, something like this. And, you know, so we have, they're asking for water lines. We can, as a community, we don't have to give water back to these, these CAFOs, you know? We have droughts where the citizens of Red Bull Springs don't have enough water, you know? We don't need to be supplying water to CAFOs. There's, uh, you know, and these are things that, that are, are coming out of public, they're public things, like public money being used to do that. The roads that are used to, to bring the, these semi trucks in. If you go to Cadet Land and Armor Lane and you look at these roads, there's no way you should be taking semi trucks down these roads and this. And, uh, you know, our, our county mayor said there's, you know, the Jim Con Road, there's gonna be accidents and stuff, these, these things load these chickens out of it. These roads just are not set up for it. These roads are gonna have to be upgraded, and that money's gonna come from the taxpayers in the community. So there's ways that we can, we can't really stop them, but we can prick them in the side a little for, just a little bit. And these are things that we can do by talking to our road commissioners and our, and the, the city councils and the things, they're, they're supplying the roads, the water, the gas, and all these kinds of things. And then there's just the whole social aspect, you know, when, you know, people really don't want to be shunned by their neighbors, you know, they don't really, you know, people, we're, we're social animals, and, and, uh, there's, we can just talk about it, and just, you know, when you're having a cup of coffee at the, at the shop, you know, you just talk about it. We just have to talk in our, in our church groups and in our, uh, social activities and stuff. So there's, there's a whole lot of things we can do just on, on very, uh, small, small scale, and that's really the best thing we can do. We can make some petitions, I think there's some petitions going around. If you do sign, uh, where you get the newsletter from, uh, Terry's group, you can, I think we're having a raffle, we have a raffle for a book.
If anybody else wants to sign up and they can, it's, it's just to get on our, if you want a newsletter from us, uh, is all it is, and also there'll be a drawing, and one of you will get that part broken back there.
And, and that newsletter will kind of help keep you informed about other communities throughout the United States that are going through these same similar situations and, and, and what they're doing to try to, you know, help rebuild, um, local, uh, food and sustainable agriculture in their community, to help the food systems, and also to limit the degradation of, of their community and their environment and that kind of thing. So, um.
Is there, I, I would assume there would be a high percentage of birth defects and also health issues, the high, uh, the high rate of infectious diseases, is that true?
Well, they found things, you know, like blue body syndrome, um, from nitrates in the water, and, um, and then, you know, with, uh, you've got your, you've got your pesticides, you've got more problems with your, uh, people that have, uh, heart problems and, 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 and breathing problems as far as CFPB and that kind of thing.
Yeah, I would think that was, yeah, I mean, I think, you know, I mean, it's a real issue because that's a heavy metal, and we know it builds up in our body.
Um, and, you know, we know that it's in the, in the feathers from the feather meal and stuff, you know, I mean, and so we know, and we know that it was in the chicken and that kind of thing. And it was only, you know, um, the government, EPA wouldn't even deal with all of this, and USDA wouldn't deal with it until the research, Johns Hopkins and some of the other, um, research sources just started coming out with the research and calling out the carpet, and then that's when the maker, um, I don't know how many makers there were of the different arsenals, but they start, they said, you know, pull my line. Um, there, but there's been a timeline for that. I know, you know, ar- arsenic's a real issue with the build, and the buildup of, of, of pools and also the chicken that, you know, even eating chicken from a grocery store, having that arsenic level in your body.
Right. That's pretty scary, you know, think about that, you know?
But there's, there, you know, there, the, the research is, is somewhat limited, there's more coming out all the time, but the research has been.
I, I think probably the best research you can find is through the Center for Global Future, John Tomlin, I sat on that board for five years, three years, but I think, you know, period, you research on a lot of the stuff, that would be the place to.
So that's one of the things that we're gonna, uh, uh, bring up later, uh, is, uh, there's a lot of resources out there, and I think one of the reasons that I wanted to bring a few folks in from other places, just to know that we're not alone in this, that there's many places throughout the country that are dealing with the same issue. There's movies, there's books, there's a whole slew of organizations, and there's, uh, people that are, are working on these issues. We're not, we've got the whole thing to put up, and we are, for better or worse, we're gonna have to keep leading. And we're just, every now and then, we'll, we'll put something in the papers, some, we'll just say, let's all get together and talk about this, and we'll try to come up with some ideas, and just to get together and talk about it, really, really important. Whether we can stop it or not, it will be a really thing. There's many other things coming up, we're gonna have gas fracking, drilling oil, hog, uh, CAFOs, nuclear weapons facilities, there's no telling. You know, get ready. So the more that we can be, uh, a community, the better, the better we'll be. I'm just gonna finish off with a few things. I do have a sample, sample contract, and, uh, and it says in black and white that any time, uh, the company can pull the contract out from, and with no reason. And so, uh, the owner that I showed this to laughed at it, they said, if, they would never recommend somebody signing this contract. You're, you're, you're a visor.
Is this a contract?
Uh, no, this one's a, a copy. And then I have, uh, a company called E S C, Environmental Service, uh, in Mount Juliet that is willing to do water testing for us, and this is huge, this water testing is very, very expensive, and they're willing to waste the deed because they like Red Bull Springs and they like, they like to scare water. So anybody that's living near, uh, that's proposing these kinds of things, we're gonna get some baseline water testing before the facility is brought on. And then there are the place where the manure is going. And before you can put a CAFO up, you have to explain where the, uh, uh, as well as, uh, about five million, uh, pounds of manure, you have to explain exactly where that's gonna go. And so there's a list of, uh, six farmers who have, uh, had their name on these contracts, and we're thinking of writing them a letter, uh, to citizens of Red Bull Springs just saying, take your name off this contract, and you can still get some chicken, you can put it on your farm if you want to, but, um, if you take your name off this contract, you won't be held liable, you won't be in a binding contract where you have to take, each of these farmers are taking about eight hundred thousand pounds of manure over the next few years. And they're gonna spread it, not on these CAFO farms, they're gonna spread it next to your home. And all around. And so we're thinking of just very politely asking these, these, these farmers to just remove their names from this document, from this contract, and then these CAFOs or, or permits will be, uh, null, and they'll have to find somebody else to sign.
Mother suckers.
And this is again where as a community, you know, each of you know a dozen people, and every, each of them know a dozen people, and we're all, we're a small community, we all know each other around here. You can't really, I can't hardly do anything without everybody knowing about it before I even know about it, and know what, know what I'm talking about. And, you know, sometimes that gets on my nerves, but, uh, other times I'm pretty glad about it, so it is what it is. So, uh, these are a couple of things we're thinking about, Joe, we are passing around a petition, and again, there is gonna be a raffle, when are we gonna do the raffle? It's gonna happen like now, we're at the hotel, or it can happen, well, I was going to the hotel for a party, for the food and music and fun, okay, well, good. So, uh, did anybody not sign on to this, would like to win the book? Let's, let's do that before. There's a raffle for this big book, uh, oh, okay.
Here, Joe, you need to sign that raffle, you can have this book on your coffee table.
This book has, this is really, really pretty pictures.
Show me that.
There's, oh, you walked, there's like a coffee table?
Yeah.
Be bitter on your coffee table, and then your backyard.
Okay.
Definitely when you have family over or friends over, then that's something for being a big hobby.
I'd suggest waiting till after dinner. So, uh, to do these kinds of things, it takes a lot of people volunteering, so, uh, I would like everybody to give, uh, Terry a hand with the, uh, the mailbag. Uh, Janelle over here. Uh, you all informed via some kind of electronic media? Yeah, so we, uh, she got some, uh, what is our Facebook, tell them who hides?
Do you want to hide some Facebook? Friends along the street, we're farmers, that's, since we have some papers, that's in the papers, but yeah, next one's on Facebook, that'll be great.
Uh, we'd, I'd like to, uh, point out Bonnie, she's been living next to Cobb and dealing with it, what do you have, Bonnie?
I have a picture for anybody here that has seen that, I will pass this to the raffle. It's separated by my buddy, uh, it's pretty. I want you to see, the mothership has landed. This is only, this is the beginning of, uh, in this county, with all of these chicken cells, they shoot about three hundred and eighty-five thousand chickens three times a week, that's only.
I'd like to thank, uh, newspaper, coming to read this, these people from the press here, y'all have a huge possibility, and, uh, really appreciate it. Thank you.
I guess we're gonna talk about living in a hotel, tell me about our farm, Rainbow Meadow Farm, and you can, uh, or on Facebook, just look up Rainbow Meadow Farms with S on the end, and you can go and, and kind of see what we do on our farm and all the different animals we raise, and, and kind of how we've done our marketing and, and that kind of thing. I'd be glad to share that with you, because it is hard coming out, um, just, uh, raising crops or, or just raising in a contract and trying to, you know, tell them, you know, we're a grower and marketer and everything, it's a family operation, it's important, regeneration, and, uh, you know, to, to families, so.
You work for them?
Um, my dad is seventy-one, he worked about half time there, he had, um, a couple of these jobs. My mom is seventy and had, uh, top school for thirty years, is now about seventeen years and missing my step. Um, my, my eight-year-old son just finished high school and working half time on it, and , uh, daughter who's seventeen next week, who's finishing high school and working on it, uh, as well, she's gonna go to college for business in, um, and then her boyfriend, um, and my, my girl helps a little. One of the things that we're fixing to do, that kind of our whole situation and Mark and his home years, is that we're in the process of opening up a bookshop and joining tanks, and, um, my kids are gonna be working there as well, plus, plus we have two employees as well. Um, and we're gonna be, uh, you know, having a, a deli in there and serving lunch and that kind of thing.
Yeah, so, uh, I would like to, uh, give Janelle a hand for coming. We have been meeting, uh, we, we've had meetings, uh, explaining, you know, their operations, and, uh, again, we're trying to be very friendly with these people that are part of our community, and, uh, we don't want to export from our family, we don't want, um, the, you know, uh, we're ready to provide some hamburger for the chili tonight. So you all are welcome to stay here for the Alcohol Hawks Anonymous meeting. But I think you can bring some alcohol into the next, uh, the hotel if you want. And, uh, thank you all so much for coming, and come on over to the hotel, have, have dinner with us, we'll be a lot of fun, we're gonna be hanging around and drawing, or the drawing, the drawing is happening right now. Before you leave, we're gonna do the drawing, that happens. Before you leave, we're gonna do the drawing, is that happening? Okay, hold on just a minute for the drawing, we'll, we'll get, uh, someone's gonna win this book, and if you want to, if you win this book, you can look at it and then you can donate it to the public library.
I thought you was a little bit nervous about that, that he didn't, he didn't agree for it. Does anybody, uh, touch on the antibiotics in, uh, the, and then saw a documentary on maybe that's about antibiotics, it's just viruses. And then you're early in the season, I don't know, I don't know, I don't know.
There's, there's, there has been shown today, uh, first, second, and, you know, near CAFOs and also in the war, in the war, in the war, and, you know, all the rest, they don't work as, and, you know, people talk about it, um, but it's, but it is, it's, it's, it's a challenge.
I'm gonna take a picture of that real quick. Oh, yeah, sure.